My deaf daughter came home in tears after her new teacher, Karen, ridiculed her for not answering a question she couldn ' t even hear. What Karen didn ' t realize was that the girl she humiliated is my daughter and I happen to run the entire state education board. If you love justice served cold and a satisfying twist, hit like and subscribe for more true story takedowns. The air buzzed with that unique blend of excitement and nerves that always comes with the first day of school. Ellie sat in the backseat of our car, her hands neatly folded in her lap, her new backpack zipped tight against her chest like a shield. She looked calm, but I knew better. At twelve years old, Ellie had learned to master the art of masking discomfort. She would smile through awkward encounters, nod along during conversations she couldn ' t hear, and pretend she didn ' t notice the pitying glances or stifled giggles of kids who didn ' t understand what it meant to be deaf. Today was the start of sixth grade at West Haven Middle School. It was supposed to be a new chapter, one filled with promise. The school had advertised itself as inclusive, progressive, and equipped to handle students of all needs and abilities. Their brochure had featured children in wheelchairs, students with cochlear implants, and a whole paragraph about their commitment to accessibility. It had been enough to make me feel cautiously optimistic. When we pulled into the parking lot, families were milling around, hugging goodbye, snapping first day photos. Ellie stepped out slowly, scanning the crowd, and signed to me that she was ready. I signed back, telling her she would do great and that I ' d be back to pick her up by three. She smiled, then took a deep breath and walked toward the front doors. I stayed long enough to watch her disappear into the building. A teacher stood at the entrance, greeting students as they arrived. She was a tall woman with overstyled blonde hair and thick eyeliner, wearing a cardigan that clashed with her floral print dress. She held a clipboard in one hand and a coffee in the other. As Ellie approached, the woman glanced down at her list and then looked back up. Her mouth moved, she said something to Ellie, but she didn ' t face her directly. Ellie hesitated, clearly unsure what had been said. The woman repeated herself, but again didn ' t bother turning her body so Ellie could read her lips. I felt my stomach twist. Ellie pointed to her hearing aids, then to her interpreter, who stood just a few feet away. The teacher gave a tight, almost theatrical smile, then waved her in. It was a small moment, barely lasting a few seconds, but something about it didn ' t sit right with me. The smile was too forced, the greeting was too perfunctory. The teacher ' s expression shifted the moment Ellie walked past, her face hardening as if she ' d already made up her mind about my daughter. That was my first real impression of Karen. I went home trying to convince myself I was reading too much into it. Maybe she was just overwhelmed with the start of the year, maybe she was distracted, maybe it was nothing. Parents overanalyze everything, and I was no exception. But something tugged at me as I tried to go about my day. When three o ' clock rolled around, I was already parked outside the school. Ellie came out with a group of kids, her pace a little faster than usual. She climbed into the car and shut the door with more force than necessary. I looked at her. She didn ' t say anything. After a few seconds, she pulled out her phone and typed a message. She handed it to me. My teacher didn ' t face me when she spoke. She said I shouldn ' t need an interpreter if I have hearing aids. Other kids were staring. I inhaled slowly, trying not to react immediately. I signed to her, asking if she wanted to talk about it now or wait until later. She signed back, later. That was fine. I understood. She needed time. That evening, over dinner, she opened up a little more. Karen, whose last name was something forgettable and suburban, had introduced herself to the class with a long monologue while pacing around the room. She never looked directly at Ellie. She never paused to check that Ellie could follow. Ellie had tried to advocate for herself. She raised her hand and explained that she needed people to face her when they spoke. She mentioned that sometimes the acoustics made it hard to distinguish voices, even with her hearing aids. Karen responded, according to Ellie, with something that sounded helpful but felt patronizing. She told the class they all had to be extra patient with Ellie this year and to speak slowly and clearly so she doesn ' t fall behind. Ellie said it made her feel like a mascot, not a student. By the end of the first day, she already knew this year would be harder than the last. I sat with her as she told me all of this, my anger slowly simmering just below the surface. I nodded. I asked questions. I didn ' t show how furious I was, because I didn ' t want her to feel like she had caused any of it. She hadn ' t. This wasn ' t on her. Later that night, I opened the school website and looked up Karen ' s bio. It was thin. She ' d been teaching for over a decade, had a master ' s in education, was described as a passionate advocate for students, nothing remarkable. Her staff photo looked overly retouched, as if someone had used a beauty filter. I checked her class syllabus, which had been emailed to parents earlier that day. There was no mention of accommodations, no line about accessibility services, not even a token paragraph about inclusion. That to me, said everything. I could feel a familiar tension winding through my shoulders, the same one I ' d felt years ago when we first had to fight for Ellie to get appropriate I E P services. This was not our first encounter with a broken system or with educators who mistook difference for deficiency, but I had hoped perhaps naively that middle school would be better, that with all the progress made, people would have caught up by now. The worst part was how easily Karen had dismissed my daughter on day one, how quick she had been to decide that Ellie was an inconvenience. What Karen didn ' t know, couldn ' t have known, was that I was not just any parent, and that ignorance was going to cost her. The days that followed offered no signs of improvement. Each evening, Ellie would come home with a new story, another brick added to the quiet wall building between her and her teacher. None of the stories were explosive, not at first. It was the accumulation of smaller moments, seemingly insignificant on their own, that made my stomach churn. One day, it was a worksheet handed out without a digital version, despite Ellie ' s I E P clearly stating she needed access to materials in formats compatible with her speech to text app. Another day, Karen played an instructional video without subtitles, and when Ellie raised her hand to ask if they could turn on the captions, Karen simply said there were none and moved on. Ellie never liked complaining, so I knew that if she was telling me this much, she was holding back even more. I encouraged her to keep a small journal to document what was happening. I told her it would help later if we needed to advocate for changes. She nodded, reluctant but obedient, and began scribbling down notes in a tiny spiral bound notebook she kept tucked in her backpack. I didn ' t ask to read it right away. I wanted her to feel ownership over it. But knowing she was tracking these things gave me a sense of preparation, of control, even if I hadn ' t yet decided what action I would take. I sent a polite email to Karen introducing myself and thanking her for welcoming Ellie to her class. I reiterated that Ellie relies heavily on visual cues and benefits from being seated near the front, with direct eye contact and clear speech. I reminded her that Ellie has an interpreter available on request and that the district had approved funds for additional support if needed. I waited three days before I received a response. It was short, formal, and entirely devoid of any warmth. She assured me that she was doing everything within reason to accommodate Ellie ' s needs and that she had not observed any issues preventing her from participating fully. I read the sentence three times, each time more slowly than the last, preventing her from participating fully. It was such a carefully chosen phrase, so clinical and noncommittal that it barely acknowledged reality. I thought about how Ellie sat in the back of the room because her assigned seat hadn ' t been changed despite requests. I thought about how she had told me that group work always left her isolated because no one wanted to wait for her to catch up or repeat themselves. I thought about how Karen ' s refusal to face her while speaking might not register as a glaring issue to an outsider, but to a child relying on light predding, it meant every instruction was a puzzle missing half its pieces. There was one moment Ellie shared that finally made my breath catch. It happened during a class discussion about American history. Karen asked a question, something about the Civil War, and called on Ellie without warning. Ellie didn ' t respond immediately because she hadn ' t caught the question. When she turned to the girl beside her and asked her to repeat it, Karen said, loud enough for the whole class to hear, if you ' re not paying attention, I ' ll have to move on. Then she added, this is why we need to listen the first time. Ellie told me this quietly, staring at her pasta, pushing peas around with her fork. I asked her what she had done after that. She said she stayed quiet and stared at her desk. No one stood up for her, not even the kids who had been kind to her on the first day. That night, I found myself pacing, not out of habit, but out of helplessness. I had dealt with challenging educators before, but there was something different about this. Karen wasn ' t just careless. She was strategic. Her behavior lived in the margins, in spaces too subtle to spark outright outrage, but too pointed to be misunderstood. She hadn ' t said anything explicitly discriminatory, nothing you could circle in red pen and slap with a warning, but it was in her tone, her posture, the way she smiled with her mouth but not her eyes, the way she minimized Ellie ' s needs and framed them as inconveniences. I reached out to another parent, one whose son Max was also in Ellie ' s class. I kept my tone casual. I asked how Max was adjusting, what he thought of his new teacher. The reply was immediate and surprisingly candid. Max thought Karen was strict. He said she talked down to the class and got annoyed when kids asked questions. He had noticed that Karen sometimes rolled her eyes when Ellie raised her hand. He didn ' t understand why, but he said it made him feel uncomfortable. I thanked the parent and tucked that information away. Then I contacted Ellie ' s speech therapist from her previous school, someone who had always been a strong ally. She agreed to meet for coffee. We sat outside on a shaded patio while she listened to everything I told her. She didn ' t seem surprised. In fact, she said she had heard whispers about Karen from colleagues in the district. Apparently, Karen had transferred from a different middle school two years prior under vague circumstances. The official reason had been personality conflicts with administration. But unofficially, it was known that several parents had lodged complaints about her inflexible teaching style and lack of sensitivity to special needs students. It didn ' t surprise me. What did surprise me was how well the school had hidden it. Karen had been given a clean slate. Whatever had happened before, she had emerged with no public record of reprimand or consequence. I went back to Ellie ' s journal that night. I asked if I could read it. She hesitated, then handed it to me. Her handwriting was tidy and careful, like she had tried to make her experiences more palatable by presenting them neatly. There were entries about being ignored during science labs, where Karen always seemed to forget to give her instructions. There were notes about other students laughing when Karen mimicked a kid mumbling and glanced in Ellie ' s direction. There was an entry where Ellie wrote that she hated asking for help now, because it made her feel like she was being difficult. That one hit me the hardest. Ellie had never been the type to shy away from asking questions. She was curious, thoughtful, and confident in her own intelligence. For her to feel like seeking support was an inconvenience, meant something toxic had taken root in that classroom. I decided that I wasn ' t going to wait any longer. The next morning, I sent a message to the assistant principal requesting a meeting to discuss classroom dynamics and Ellie ' s accommodations. I received an automated reply confirming my appointment for the following week. It was longer than I wanted to wait, but I knew better than to push too soon without a strategy. I needed more information, more documentation, more eyes. Because I wasn ' t just confronting a teacher, I was confronting a system that had protected her, and I was only getting started. The weather was unseasonably warm the morning it happened. I remember that because Ellie wore her short sleeved shirt with the constellation design she loved, the one that made her feel like she was carrying a secret map on her chest. She had been quieter than usual while getting ready, which wasn ' t entirely new. Each day seemed to chip away a little more of her usual spark, and lately, she had begun signing less and texting me more, even when we were sitting in the same room. That morning though, she gave me a small smile as she grabbed her bag, and I held onto it like it meant something, like it was a sign that maybe things would be better. They weren ' t. At ten, twelve A M, my phone buzzed while I was in a meeting. The screen lit up with a message from Ellie. It was short. It read, I need to come home, now. My heart tightened. She rarely asked to leave school early. She always tried to make it through the day, no matter how exhausting it was. I excused myself without explanation and drove straight to West Haven, calling the front office on the way. They told me she was already in the nurse ' s office waiting. I asked if she was sick. The secretary hesitated before saying she was upset but didn ' t offer more. When I arrived, Ellie was sitting stiffly on the edge of the cot, her knees tucked close to her chest, her eyes were red but dry. I signed to her, asking if she wanted to talk or wait until we got home. She signed back, home. That was all I needed. I signed her out, nodded curtly at the nurse who avoided my gaze, and walked my daughter out of that building without saying another word. It wasn ' t until we were halfway home that Ellie handed me her phone. She had typed out everything, every painful detail. I pulled over to read it. Karen had assigned the class an oral presentation for that morning. The topic was, what makes a good leader, and students had been given a week to prepare. Ellie had worked hard on it. She had written her speech, translated it into American Sign Language, and practiced every night with her interpreter. The plan was for her to sign the speech while her interpreter voiced it. They had cleared this arrangement with the school ' s support team and had done the same for other class presentations in previous years. But when Ellie arrived that morning, Karen announced there had been a change of plans. She said students would be selected at random to present, and no one would be allowed to use notes or props. When Ellie raised her hand to clarify if that included her interpreter, Karen responded in front of the entire class. She said that if Ellie had written her own speech, she should be able to present it herself, just like everyone else. Ellie explained that presenting in A S L was her method of delivery. Karen shrugged and said, I understand you use sign language, but this assignment is about speaking. We are working on verbal communication skills. When Ellie stood up and began to sign anyway, Karen interrupted her. She said, no gestures please, you need to use your own voice. Ellie froze. The class was dead silent. Then, from the back, someone snickered. Karen did nothing. Ellie turned to the interpreter, who looked just as shocked, unsure what to do. Karen repeated, Ellie, either give your speech out loud or take a zero. I am not giving special treatment. Ellie stood there for another second, then walked out of the room. She didn ' t run, she didn ' t cry, she just left. Reading those words on her phone, I felt the slow, sick heat of anger settle into my chest. Not the explosive kind that comes and goes, but the kind that burns steadily and reshapes everything it touches. Ellie was still beside me in the car, watching my reaction. I took her hand and squeezed it. I didn ' t ask any more questions. I didn ' t have to. When we got home, I let her go to her room and draw the curtains closed. I made tea, though I knew she probably wouldn ' t drink it, and sat at the kitchen table staring at the blank screen of my laptop. I didn ' t open my email yet. I didn ' t call the school, not immediately. First, I had to calm the part of me that wanted to drive back to that classroom and scream. Instead, I texted the interpreter Michelle and asked if she was willing to talk. She called within the hour. Her voice was quiet, almost hesitant, but there was a tremor in it that mirrored my own emotion. She confirmed everything Ellie had written. She said she had never been in a situation like that before, that she had been told she could support Ellie during the presentation, that Karen had not only overridden that plan but had done so with a tone that made it clear she saw Ellie ' s needs as a crutch, not a tool. Michelle said she had wanted to step in but didn ' t want to escalate things in front of the students. She was furious. She said she had already filed an incident report with the school administration. She asked if I was okay. I thanked her. I told her I would take it from here. That night, I read through the district ' s guidelines on accessibility and inclusion. I reviewed the Americans with Disabilities Act and its mandates for reasonable accommodations in public education. I pulled up Ellie ' s individualized education plan and read every line again, even though I already knew it by heart. There, in black and white, it stated that Ellie had the right to alternative communication methods, including the use of an interpreter during presentations and assessments. Karen had not just been cruel, she had violated protocol. She had broken the law. I sent a formal email to the assistant principal and copied the principal and the district ' s special education coordinator. I outlined the incident in exact detail. I cited the I E P, I attached the relevant A D A clauses. I included a copy of Michelle ' s report, with her permission. I made no accusations, only statements. I asked for a full investigation. I requested that Ellie be moved to another class while the matter was being resolved. I did not mention my position with the state school board, not yet. By the next morning, my inbox was flooded. Apologies from administrators, promises to look into it, requests for meetings, carefully worded assurances that the district took these matters seriously. But no one, not one person, said Karen ' s name. It was as if the incident had occurred in a vacuum, as if Ellie had been humiliated by the universe itself, not by a woman who stood in front of a class and used her authority to strip a child of her dignity. Ellie stayed home the next day. I let her sleep late. I brought her breakfast in bed and told her I was proud of her for walking out. She didn ' t say much, she just nodded and stared out the window. I sat beside her in silence, thinking of the next steps. This was not over. Karen thought she had power. What she didn ' t realize was that she had just challenged the one person in the entire state most capable of holding her accountable. She had mocked the wrong child. And now the storm was coming. Ellie barely touched her breakfast the next morning. Her cereal sat untouched in the bowl, milk going soggy, spoon resting where she had placed it with the kind of gentle defeat that said more than words ever could. I sat across from her at the kitchen table, pretending to scroll through my emails, giving her space but keeping close. She had not returned to school since the incident. Two full days had passed, and she had barely left her room except to eat and sit with me in silence. I had already made the decision that she would not go back to Karen ' s classroom. There was no trust left to salvage. I had submitted the official request for classroom reassignment and followed it with a direct call to the district ' s special services office. It took four attempts and two voice messages before I finally reached a woman named Andrea, who assured me that the matter was being escalated to the district level. She spoke in a careful, practiced voice, the kind you hear from people who have said the same sentence a hundred times and are used to dancing around the truth without ever stepping on it. When I asked directly whether Karen had been placed on any kind of leave during the investigation, Andrea paused. Then she told me that the district was taking the matter seriously but could not comment on personnel actions during an ongoing review. It was a rehearsed answer, polished and vague, designed to sound reassuring while offering nothing at all. After the call, I closed my laptop and sat back, feeling the weight of my own restraint pressing against my chest. There had been so many moments over the past few days when I had wanted to call a press conference, send out a mass email, or walk into that school with every document and legal citation I had at my disposal. But I held back, not because I lacked the power, but because I wanted to use it precisely. I knew that one misstep would allow them to paint me as an overzealous parent with a vendetta. I needed to be meticulous. Methodical, strategic, I needed them to walk straight into their own mistake. Later that afternoon, I picked Ellie up from a quiet walk around the neighborhood. She had gone out on her own, which was rare, and I was glad to see her taking even that small step. She got in the car and handed me a folded piece of paper. It was a letter she had written, not to Karen, not to the principal, but to the school board. She had written about how it felt to stand in front of a class and be told that her way of communicating was invalid. She described the heat in her chest, the sting in her eyes, and the way the silence in the room had wrapped around her like a chokehold. She explained how she had worked hard to memorize every word of her presentation in A S L, how she had practiced for days, only to be told in front of everyone that her voice did not count unless it sounded like everyone else ' s. Her handwriting was small but steady. Her words were clear, deliberate, and brave. I felt something catch in my throat as I read the final line. All I want is to learn without being made to feel like a problem. I folded the letter carefully and told her it was perfect. I asked if she wanted me to send it. She nodded. I did not tell her that the letter would carry more weight than she imagined, because what Karen still did not know was that the person reading it would not be just another name in a sea of administrators, it would be me. That evening, I began gathering more information. I reached out to a handful of parents discreetly, choosing the ones I had come to trust over the years. I asked if their children had mentioned anything unusual about Karen or her teaching methods. The responses trickled in slowly at first, then all at once. Several parents said their kids found Karen intimidating. One said her daughter had stopped asking questions in class because she was afraid of being called out. Another said that Karen frequently made sarcastic remarks when students needed clarification, often questioning whether they were even paying attention at all. The most concerning message came from a parent named Lila. Her son, Jordan, had an I E P for processing delays. According to Lila, Karen had once told him during a math lesson that maybe he should try harder if he wanted to keep up with the rest of the class. Lila had filed a complaint with the assistant principal, but nothing came of it. That was when I realized this was not just about Ellie. Karen had made a habit of pushing kids with learning differences to the margins. She did it quietly, with just enough plausible deniability to avoid formal consequences. And the administration, either through incompetence or indifference, had let her get away with it. I compiled the stories into a single document. I stripped the names, kept the language neutral, and added citations from relevant district policies and state education laws. I included a section on Ellie ' s experience, supported by her journal entries and the interpreter ' s written statement. I added screenshots of emails, dated correspondence, and a timeline of events. I knew that when this document landed on the right desk, it would not be easy to ignore. The next day, I scheduled a meeting with the district ' s director of student services under the pretext of reviewing special education program funding. This was a normal part of my work as chair of the state school board, and no one questioned the timing. During the meeting, I handed her the packet. I watched her eyes scan the first few pages. I saw the shift in her posture, the stiffening of her shoulders. She asked who the teacher was. I told her. Her face changed. I recognized it immediately. She knew the name. There was history. She asked if I wanted to file a formal board level inquiry. I said not yet. I said I wanted to give the district the opportunity to address the matter internally before I escalated it. I left the office that day with a calm that surprised me, not because anything had been resolved, but because I had crossed a line I could not uncross. Karen ' s actions were no longer hidden. They were no longer buried in whispers or confined to the boundaries of a single classroom. They were documented, supported, and now sitting in the hands of someone who could no longer claim ignorance. That night, Ellie and I sat on the couch watching a nature documentary. She rested her head on my shoulder, and for the first time in days, she laughed. Not a big laugh, not a loud one, just a soft, sudden one that caught me off guard and reminded me of who she had been before all this began. I knew we had a long road ahead. I knew the system would resist change, that the people who had looked the other way would continue to protect themselves. But I also knew something else. We were no longer alone, and I had just begun to turn the wheels of something much bigger than Karen could stop. The truth about Karen began to unravel faster than I had anticipated. Once the official complaint had been filed and the supporting documentation began circulating among the district offices, I noticed a subtle shift in how people responded to me. Emails were answered more promptly. Voicemail messages were returned within the hour. Suddenly, administrators who had been neutral or noncommittal were eager to appear attentive and cooperative. It was the kind of reaction I had seen many times before in my role with the state school board. There is a particular kind of urgency that only appears when people realize that they have been seen by someone with influence. I was careful not to leverage my title directly. I made no threats. I offered no warnings. I knew that the moment I used my position to force an outcome, the conversation would shift away from Karen ' s conduct and become about me. That was not the story I wanted them to tell. I wanted the facts to speak for themselves, and I knew that if I waited just a little longer, the cracks would widen on their own. It was a phone call from a former teacher that opened the floodgates. Her name was Rachel, and she had worked at Karen ' s previous school before transferring to a neighboring district. I had met her once during a professional development workshop and remembered her as sharp, passionate, and unafraid to speak up. She reached out to me directly after hearing whispers about what had happened with Ellie. She said she was not surprised. In fact, she had expected it. Rachel told me that two years earlier, Karen had been quietly moved out of her position at a middle school in the northern part of the county. Officially, the transfer had been described as a personnel reallocation, due to shifting enrollment numbers. Unofficially, it was a disciplinary sidestep. There had been multiple complaints about Karen ' s conduct with students receiving accommodations. One parent accused her of berating their son for taking extra time on a math quiz. Another alleged that she had refused to implement a reading comprehension strategy that had been outlined in their daughter ' s I E P. The stories were remarkably consistent. Each one involved a child with a documented need being treated as a burden. Rachel said that Karen had a reputation for being dismissive towards students who required anything outside the standard routine. She prided herself on being tough and old school. There were even rumors that she believed most learning disabilities were exaggerated or fabricated. According to Rachel, Karen once said during a staff meeting that the real problem in schools was not lack of funding, but soft parenting and too many excuses. I asked Rachel why none of this had been documented formally, why the district had allowed Karen to transfer rather than be held accountable. Rachel hesitated before answering. Then she said the principal at the time had been trying to avoid a public controversy. He was two years from retirement and wanted a quiet finish to his career. Karen ' s file had been sealed with the condition that she undergo sensitivity training and demonstrate a commitment to professional growth. That training had never been confirmed or tracked. There was no follow up. I thanked Rachel and asked if she would be willing to write a statement. She said she already had. It arrived in my inbox that evening. By now, I had collected enough background information to see a clear pattern. Karen had a history of undermining students with disabilities, and each time, the institutions around her had chosen the path of least resistance. They had passed the problem along. They had traded student safety for administrative convenience. This realization angered me more than Karen ' s actions alone. It was one thing for a teacher to hold damaging beliefs or display poor judgment. It was another thing I scroll through my emails, giving her space but keeping close. She had not returned to school since the incident. Two full days had passed, and she had barely left her room except to eat and sit with me in silence. I had already made the decision that she would not go back to Karen ' s classroom. There was no trust left to salvage. I had submitted the official request for classroom reassignment and followed it with a direct call to the district ' s special services office. It took four attempts and two voice messages before I finally reached a woman named Andrea, who assured me that the matter was being escalated to the district level. She spoke in a careful, practiced voice, the kind you hear from people who have said the same sentence a hundred times and are used to dancing around the truth without ever stepping on it. When I asked directly whether Karen had been placed on any kind of leave during the investigation, Andrea paused. Then she told me that the district was taking the matter seriously but could not comment on personnel actions during an ongoing review. It was a rehearsed answer, polished and vague, designed to sound reassuring while offering nothing at all. After the call, I closed my laptop and sat back, feeling the weight of my own restraint pressing against my chest. There had been so many moments over the past few days when I had wanted to call a press conference, send out a mass email, or walk into that school with every document and legal citation I had at my disposal. But I held back, not because I lacked the power, but because I wanted to use it precisely. I knew that one misstep would allow them to paint me as an overzealous parent with a vendetta. I needed to be meticulous. Methodical, strategic, I needed them to walk straight into their own mistake. Later that afternoon, I picked Ellie up from a quiet walk around the neighborhood. She had gone out on her own, which was rare, and I was glad to see her taking even that small step. She got in the car and handed me a folded piece of paper. It was a letter she had written, not to Karen, not to the principal, but to the school board. She had written about how it felt to stand in front of a class and be told that her way of communicating was invalid. She described the heat in her chest, the sting in her eyes, and the way the silence in the room had wrapped around her like a chokehold. She explained how she had worked hard to memorize every word of her presentation in A S L, how she had practiced for days, only to be told in front of everyone that her voice did not count unless it sounded like everyone else ' s. Her handwriting was small but steady. Her words were clear, deliberate, and brave. I felt something catch in my throat as I read the final line. All I want is to learn without being made to feel like a problem. I folded the letter carefully and told her it was perfect. I asked if she wanted me to send it. She nodded. I did not tell her that the letter would carry more weight than she imagined, because what Karen still did not know was that the person reading it would not be just another name in a sea of administrators, it would be me. That evening, I began gathering more information. I reached out to a handful of parents discreetly, choosing the ones I had come to trust over the years. I asked if their children had mentioned anything unusual about Karen or her teaching methods. The responses trickled in slowly at first, then all at once. Several parents said their kids found Karen intimidating. One said her daughter had stopped asking questions in class because she was afraid of being called out. Another said that Karen frequently made sarcastic remarks when students needed clarification, often questioning whether they were even paying attention at all. The most concerning message came from a parent named Lila. Her son, Jordan, had an I E P for processing delays. According to Lila, Karen had once told him during a math lesson that maybe he should try harder if he wanted to keep up with the rest of the class. Lila had filed a complaint with the assistant principal, but nothing came of it. That was when I realized this was not just about Ellie. Karen had made a habit of pushing kids with learning differences to the margins. She did it quietly, with just enough plausible deniability to avoid formal consequences. And the administration, either through incompetence or indifference, had let her get away with it. I compiled the stories into a single document. I stripped the names, kept the language neutral, and added citations from relevant district policies and state education laws. I included a section on Ellie ' s experience, supported by her journal entries and the interpreter ' s written statement. I added screenshots of emails, dated correspondence, and a timeline of events. I knew that when this document landed on the right desk, it would not be easy to ignore. The next day, I scheduled a meeting with the district ' s director of student services under the pretext of reviewing special education program funding. This was a normal part of my work as chair of the state school board, and no one questioned the timing. During the meeting, I handed her the packet. I watched her eyes scan the first few pages. I saw the shift in her posture, the stiffening of her shoulders. She asked who the teacher was. I told her. Her face changed. I recognized it immediately. She knew the name. There was history. She asked if I wanted to file a formal board level inquiry. I said not yet. I said I wanted to give the district the opportunity to address the matter internally before I escalated it. I left the office that day with a calm that surprised me, not because anything had been resolved, but because I had crossed a line I could not uncross. Karen ' s actions were no longer hidden. They were no longer buried in whispers or confined to the boundaries of a single classroom. They were documented, supported, and now sitting in the hands of someone who could no longer claim ignorance. That night, Ellie and I sat on the couch watching a nature documentary. She rested her head on my shoulder, and for the first time in days, she laughed. Not a big laugh, not a loud one, just a soft, sudden one that caught me off guard and reminded me of who she had been before all this began. I knew we had a long road ahead. I knew the system would resist change, that the people who had looked the other way would continue to protect themselves. But I also knew something else. We were no longer alone, and I had just begun to turn the wheels of something much bigger than Karen could stop. The truth about Karen began to unravel faster than I had anticipated. Once the official complaint had been filed and the supporting documentation began circulating among the district offices, I noticed a subtle shift in how people responded to me. Emails were answered more promptly. Voicemail messages were returned within the hour. Suddenly, administrators who had been neutral or noncommittal were eager to appear attentive and cooperative. It was the kind of reaction I had seen many times before in my role with the state school board. There is a particular kind of urgency that only appears when people realize that they have been seen by someone with influence. I was careful not to leverage my title directly. I made no threats. I offered no warnings. I knew that the moment I used my position to force an outcome, the conversation would shift away from Karen ' s conduct and become about me. That was not the story I wanted them to tell. I wanted the facts to speak for themselves, and I knew that if I waited just a little longer, the cracks would widen on their own. It was a phone call from a former teacher that opened the floodgates. Her name was Rachel, and she had worked at Karen ' s previous school before transferring to a neighboring district. I had met her once during a professional development workshop and remembered her as sharp, passionate, and unafraid to speak up. She reached out to me directly after hearing whispers about what had happened with Ellie. She said she was not surprised. In fact, she had expected it. Rachel told me that two years earlier, Karen had been quietly moved out of her position at a middle school in the northern part of the county. Officially, the transfer had been described as a personnel reallocation, due to shifting enrollment numbers. Unofficially, it was a disciplinary sidestep. There had been multiple complaints about Karen ' s conduct with students receiving accommodations. One parent accused her of berating their son for taking extra time on a math quiz. Another alleged that she had refused to implement a reading comprehension strategy that had been outlined in their daughter ' s I E P. The stories were remarkably consistent. Each one involved a child with a documented need being treated as a burden. Rachel said that Karen had a reputation for being dismissive towards students who required anything outside the standard routine. She prided herself on being tough and old school. There were even rumors that she believed most learning disabilities were exaggerated or fabricated. According to Rachel, Karen once said during a staff meeting that the real problem in schools was not lack of funding, but soft parenting and too many excuses. I asked Rachel why none of this had been documented formally, why the district had allowed Karen to transfer rather than be held accountable. Rachel hesitated before answering. Then she said the principal at the time had been trying to avoid a public controversy. He was two years from retirement and wanted a quiet finish to his career. Karen ' s file had been sealed with the condition that she undergo sensitivity training and demonstrate a commitment to professional growth. That training had never been confirmed or tracked. There was no follow up. I thanked Rachel and asked if she would be willing to write a statement. She said she already had. It arrived in my inbox that evening. By now, I had collected enough background information to see a clear pattern. Karen had a history of undermining students with disabilities, and each time, the institutions around her had chosen the path of least resistance. They had passed the problem along. They had traded student safety for administrative convenience. This realization angered me more than Karen ' s actions alone. It was one thing for a teacher to hold damaging beliefs or display poor judgment. It was another thing entirely for a system designed to protect students to knowingly enable her. I began to dig deeper. Using public records, I requested access to any documented complaints filed against Karen in the past five years. The request took time, but I was patient. I already knew what I would find. While I waited, I called two board members in nearby districts and asked if they had heard anything about her. One of them remembered her name. He recalled a parent petition submitted three years ago that had included Karen among three teachers accused of discriminatory practices. The petition had disappeared after a series of closed door meetings. The pieces were falling into place. Karen had left behind a trail of red flags, and not once had she been formally disciplined. I began compiling everything into a single, comprehensive report. I included Rachel ' s statement, the summaries of parent accounts, the list of prior complaints, and the violations related to Ellie ' s I E P and the Americans with Disabilities Act. The evidence was overwhelming. This was no longer just about my daughter. This was about institutional failure. I shared the report with the superintendent. Unlike the others, he did not pretend to be surprised. He thanked me for my time and said the district would take the matter seriously. I told him I expected a full investigation and a written response outlining the steps being taken to ensure that no other student would experience what Ellie had. He asked me why I had not come forward sooner with my affiliation. I told him that my daughter should not have needed a powerful parent to be treated with dignity. That evening, I sat down with Ellie to explain what would happen next. I told her that Karen might not be teaching much longer, but that it would take a little time. I explained that her story had helped protect other kids, even ones she had never met. She listened quietly, hands resting in her lap, expression unreadable. Then she looked up at me and asked, will she ever say sorry? I did not know how to answer. I said, some people never do. She nodded. Then she said, I don ' t need her to be sorry. I just want her to stop hurting other kids. That was the moment I realized how much my daughter had grown. In the face of exclusion, she had not become bitter. She had become stronger, more focused. She understood something most adults never do, that justice is not about punishment, it is about protection. The next morning, I received confirmation that Karen had been placed on administrative leave pending investigation. It was a quiet move, without public announcement, but it was a start. Ellie returned to school a few days later, placed in a new class with a teacher named Mister Patel. From the first day, he greeted her with a smile and a clear, steady voice, always facing her directly. He gave her presentation materials in advance and asked her what he could do better. When she signed her responses, he waited patiently, with the same respect he gave every other student. She came home smiling, and for the first time in weeks, I felt like things were beginning to shift. But we were not finished. Karen had built a career on silence. It was time to make some noise. The day I decided to take the next step was crisp and clear, the kind of morning that makes everything feel sharper. I stood in front of my closet, not choosing clothes for work, not picking something for a normal day of meetings or emails or quiet oversight. I was choosing something for a visit, one that would seem routine to anyone watching but was anything but. The school was hosting its annual disability awareness week. It was a tradition adopted across the district, designed to highlight the importance of inclusion and accessibility. For most schools, it meant a week of spirit days and shallow assemblies. There would be a slideshow about Helen Keller, maybe a poster making contest about empathy. A few teachers might read aloud from books that featured disabled characters. Most of it was surface level, curated for optics, never truly transformative, but this year, it would be different. This year, I was going to make sure of it. My role on the state school board had always required a certain distance. I was expected to oversee, to advise, to observe without interfering, but the board had never forbidden site visits. And Disability Awareness Week provided a perfect reason to visit West Haven Middle School in an official capacity. No one would question why I was there. On paper, I would be showing support for a district initiative. In practice, I would be walking into the very building where my daughter had been humiliated. I arrived just after the morning bell. The principal met me in the front office, all polished smiles and overly eager handshakes. He thanked me for taking the time out of my schedule to visit and launched into a list of planned events for the week. I listened patiently, nodding when appropriate, but my eyes drifted past him toward the hallway. I wanted to see the students. I wanted to see the classrooms. Most of all, I wanted to see Karen. The principal led me on a brief tour, showing me the resource room that had been decorated with posters featuring inspirational quotes. I met a few students who had been selected to serve as accessibility ambassadors, a role that seemed to involve handing out bookmarks and repeating key phrases about kindness and acceptance. They were sweet kids, doing their best in a system that taught them slogans instead of substance. I asked if I could observe a class, preferably one with active engagement around the topic of inclusion. The principal hesitated for just a moment, then said he would check with the teachers and see who was open to a visitor. He returned a few minutes later, smiling awkwardly. He said one of the sixth grade classes had planned a discussion around empathy and student voice, and the teacher had agreed to let me observe. I asked for the teacher ' s name. It was Karen. The classroom looked much the same as it had when I had first dropped Ellie off on her first day. Desks in neat rows, motivational posters taped unevenly to the walls, a whiteboard scrawled with objectives and vocabulary terms. Karen stood at the front, wearing a fitted blazer and heels that clicked across the linoleum floor. Her blonde hair was pulled back tightly, and she smiled as I entered, though her eyes flicked to the principal as if to ask why she had not been warned. She welcomed me with a tone that sounded rehearsed, then turned back to the class. I stood at the side of the room, watching silently. The lesson had been adapted for my visit, clearly. Karen invited a few students to share short speeches they had written about what inclusion meant to them. Most read from crumpled notebook paper or stumbled through nervous explanations about being nice to everyone. It was sweet, but hollow. Karen clapped politely after each one, then opened the floor for a student volunteer to speak about how they had experienced inclusion in their own life. There was a pause, then a hand went up in the front row. It was Ellie. She stood up, calm and collected. Her hair was braided back, and she wore a T shirt with the word resilient written across the chest in block letters. Her interpreter stood beside her, ready. Karen froze, caught in the moment, but forced a smile and nodded for Ellie to begin. Ellie lifted her hands and began to sign. Her movements were smooth, expressive, confident. Her interpreter spoke in sync with her hands, voicing the words Ellie had practiced. She spoke about what it meant to be seen, not just noticed, but truly seen. She spoke about the difference between being included and being tolerated. She described what it was like to sit in a room full of people and still feel invisible. She talked about the importance of communication, not just the words spoken aloud but the effort made to bridge differences. She described a day when someone told her that her way of speaking was not enough. She did not name Karen. She did not have to. The room was silent. Ellie ended with a sentence that hit harder than anything I had heard in years. She said, inclusion means I should not have to ask to be respected. The students began to clap. A few teachers near the door clapped as well. Karen stood still, hands by her sides. Her smile was gone. Her eyes flicked to me, then back to Ellie. I stepped forward and thanked Ellie for her bravery. Then I turned to the class and spoke, not as a parent, but as a representative of the board. I told them that stories like Ellie ' s were exactly why Disability Awareness Week existed. I told them that real change starts not with posters or slogans, but with listening. I thanked the students for their attention, then turned to Karen. I said, very simply, that it was the responsibility of every educator to create a classroom where all students could thrive. I said it not as an accusation but as a reminder, but everyone in the room knew the weight behind it. After the class ended, the principal thanked me again and walked me back to the front office. Karen stayed behind. I returned to my car and sat there for a long time, watching the building through the windshield. The visit had gone exactly as I had hoped, not because it had exposed Karen in a dramatic way, but because it had placed Ellie in the center of a moment that could not be rewritten. Her voice had filled the room. Her hands had commanded the air, and no one could pretend not to understand her anymore. That evening, Ellie asked if I had seen her speak. I told her I had. She asked how she did. I told her she had done what very few people ever manage. She had spoken the truth and made people listen. She nodded once and smiled. We both knew that moment had changed everything, not just for Ellie, not just for Karen, but for every student who would walk into that classroom in the future and be told that they did not belong, because now, there was proof that they did, and the person who had tried to silence them had just been made to listen. The fallout from Ellie ' s speech reached the administrative offices faster than I had expected. Word spread through the school the way wildfire spreads through dry brush. By lunchtime, students were whispering about the sixth grader who stood up in front of her class and called out a teacher without ever saying her name. Teachers were murmuring about the visitor from the state board who had been there to witness it. The principal sent a district wide email thanking Ellie for her thoughtful contribution during Disability Awareness Week and encouraged other students to share their experiences. That email, as far as I could tell, was a smokescreen, a way to look like action was happening when the real consequences had not yet begun. But something had shifted. Karen felt it. I was certain of that. Her classroom had lost its insulation. The protective layer of silence, compliance, and distance was gone. She had always relied on subtlety, on the plausible deniability that came with being cruel in small, calculated ways. Now her behavior had a witness. Now the students she once intimidated had seen someone stand up and speak, and more importantly, they had seen that the system would listen. I returned to my office that afternoon and called the district ' s legal liaison. I explained that I had observed the disability awareness lesson at West Haven and had reason to believe that previous documentation of discrimination had been underreported or left unresolved. I stated that the timeline surrounding Ellie ' s incident, combined with former complaints from other families, suggested a pattern of exclusionary conduct. I did not accuse anyone directly. I merely described the structure of what I had seen and asked the liaison to confirm that internal investigation procedures had been followed. Within hours, I received a copy of the formal investigation report. It had been completed just days earlier. It was thick with neutral language. The report did not refer to Ellie by name, but acknowledged, a sixth grade student with documented accessibility needs, who had been inadvertently disadvantaged during a classroom presentation. Karen ' s name was mentioned four times, always accompanied by statements like, did not intend harm, and followed existing classroom expectations. The conclusion, Karen had failed to properly implement the students ' I E P accommodations and had exhibited a misunderstanding of best practices for inclusive instruction. The recommendation was a corrective action plan. She would be required to complete twenty hours of sensitivity training and meet monthly with a mentor teacher for the remainder of the academic year. There was no mention of disciplinary leave, no apology, no accountability. I read the report three times. I marked the margins with questions and highlighted key omissions, and then I sent an official response. I addressed it to the superintendent, the principal, and the board of education. I cited the legal precedents outlined in the Americans with Disabilities Act. I attached testimony from parents, statements from Ellie ' s interpreter, and a summary of previous unresolved complaints. I made no threats. I simply laid out the facts and asked a single question. If a teacher had caused harm to a student because of a refusal to accommodate a physical injury, would sensitivity training be enough? That email broke the quiet. The superintendent replied personally within the hour. He invited me to a meeting at the district office the following morning. It was to be an internal review discussion, attended by the school board chair, the director of special services, and a representative from the state department. I accepted. When I arrived, they were already waiting. The room was plain and cold, filled with the kind of furniture that exists only in schools and bureaucracies. Everyone looked tired. The superintendent began by thanking me for my involvement and acknowledging the unique position I held as both parent and board member. He said the district was prepared to revisit the conclusions of the initial report, given the additional documentation. I listened without interrupting. Then I placed Ellie ' s written letter in the center of the table. I asked them each to read it. I said nothing while they did. I watched the discomfort shift from face to face, not because the letter was angry or accusatory, but because it was human. It was a child explaining that her voice had been denied to her in a room meant to educate her. A child saying that what hurt most was not the moment she was silenced, but the fact that no one stood up for her when it happened. The board chair spoke first. She said the letter made clear that this was not just an administrative mistake, it was an ethical failure. The director of special services nodded. The representative from the state said that it may be time to consider teacher reassignment or possible contract termination. There it was. Finally, someone said the word out loud. Termination. Karen had built her entire career on avoiding that word. She had survived by skirting the edge of policy without ever slipping over it. But now, her actions had a face, a name. A child with a story strong enough to reach beyond one school district and into the hands of decision makers who could no longer ignore it. Over the next several days, the conversation around Karen shifted from internal review to personnel action. I kept my involvement minimal, offering guidance when asked but letting the process unfold according to protocol. I did not want this to be about me. I wanted it to be about Ellie and every student like her who had been made to feel like their needs were too complicated to accommodate. Ellie, for her part, returned to school with a quiet confidence that I had not seen in her before. Her new teacher, Mister Patel, made room for her in the front row, and always spoke with clarity. He included visual aids, provided materials in advance, and made sure the interpreter was positioned where Ellie could see both of them. He also asked her questions directly, not to single her out, but to invite her in. He made her feel like she belonged. Other students began to follow his example. They paused when speaking to her. They waited for her responses. A few even learned basic signs to say hello or thank you. It was not perfect, but it was progress. Small, measurable, human progress. One afternoon, Ellie came home with a folded note in her backpack. It was from a classmate named Maya, a shy girl who rarely spoke up. The note said, I was scared to tell the teacher I needed help. Then I saw you sign your story. You made me feel like I could speak too. Ellie showed me the note and smiled. That weekend, I received word that Karen had been officially removed from the classroom. The district framed it as a mutual decision. She would not be returning next year. She would not be eligible for reassignment. Her record would reflect a failure to meet the terms of her corrective action plan. There was no press release, no public apology, just an empty desk and a quiet end to a long pattern of harm. But I did not need an apology. I had what mattered, a daughter who knew her worth, a school that had begun to listen, and a system that had finally chosen to act. The board meeting that sealed everything was quieter than I expected. No fireworks, no public scandal, no community protest in the parking lot, just the hum of an overhead projector, the shuffling of papers, and the controlled tones of officials doing what they were supposed to have done months ago. Karen ' s name was brought up briefly during the closed session. The superintendent reported that she had opted to leave her position effective immediately following a district decision to initiate contract termination proceedings. The board voted unanimously to accept her resignation in lieu of further investigation. There was no fanfare, just a motion, a second, and the quiet affirmation of hands raised in a room where no one was really looking at one another. I sat in the back row, anonymous. I was not there as a parent this time, not officially. I was there as an observer, which is exactly what they called it when someone from the state school board attended a district level meeting. I had already sent in my feedback and reviewed the findings. I had asked questions and reviewed the policies cited. All the technical pieces had been handled, all the i ' s dotted and t ' s crossed, but I wanted to see it through to the end. After the meeting adjourned, a few people approached to shake my hand or nod in recognition. No one said Karen ' s name again. It was as though she had never existed, her presence erased by the silence she had once used as a weapon, a strange kind of justice, but justice all the same. When I got home that evening, Ellie was at the kitchen table sketching something in her notebook. I did not interrupt her. I just stood there for a moment, watching the way her hands moved with care over the page. She was drawing a tree, tall and lean, with wide roots and birds nesting in its branches. I asked her what it was for. She signed that it was part of a project for Mister Patel ' s class. Each student had to draw a symbol that represented their year so far. I asked her what the tree meant. She said it was about being grounded even when things around you are loud and confusing. She said the roots kept her steady, and the branches reminded her that she could still grow in all directions. Then she smiled and added that the birds were the voices she was learning to hear, even if they sounded different. I told her it was beautiful, and I meant it. The following week brought more change than I expected. The school announced a district wide initiative focused on inclusive teaching practices. They would be hiring new staff to review individualized education plans and provide mandatory training for all faculty. They were forming an advisory council that would include student representatives, and Ellie had already been nominated by several teachers to join. I received an email from the assistant principal inviting me to meet with the new director of student support services. It was a courtesy message, one designed to show gratitude and transparency. It was a courtesy message, one designed to show gratitude and transparency. The new director was someone I had worked with before, someone I trusted. We scheduled a call and spoke for nearly an hour, she asked about Ellie. She wanted to know what had worked, what had not, and what changes would matter most going forward. I gave her my honest assessment, not as someone with authority, but as someone who had watched a child come home crying over something that never should have happened. The hardest part was explaining that none of this had been about a single incident. The presentation, the classroom exclusion, the public humiliation, these were only symptoms. The real problem had always been systemic, a culture of silence, a pattern of negligence, a refusal to see accommodation as a right instead of a burden. By the end of the conversation, the director thanked me again and promised to prioritize accessibility not just on paper but in practice. I wanted to believe her, I still do. The most surprising letter came not from the district but from a former student. It arrived in a plain envelope with no return address. Inside was a handwritten note from a young man named Caleb, who said he had been in Karen's class four years earlier. He had struggled with dyslexia and had often been made to read aloud despite accommodations. He wrote about how Karen would correct him in front of the class and use his stumbles as teachable moments on the importance of paying attention. He wrote that he had felt stupid, angry, and ashamed. He had never told anyone, not even his parents. Then he said he had read about Ellie's story on a local education blog. A short article had been posted anonymously by a teacher who had witnessed the presentation during Disability Awareness Week. It had described Ellie's strength and the district's quiet decision to remove Karen from the classroom. It had not mentioned names, but Caleb had known immediately who it was about. He ended his letter by thanking Ellie. He said that hearing her story helped him realize he was not crazy for feeling hurt, that what happened to him had not been his fault. That seeing someone else speak when he never could made him feel a little less alone. I gave the letter to Ellie. She read it slowly, then folded it back up and placed it in the back of her sketchbook. She did not say much, but she did not need to. Sometimes the impact of truth does not need to echo loudly to be felt. Later that week, Mister Patel invited Ellie to lead a classroom discussion on communication. She had asked if she could teach her classmates a few simple signs, and he had given her the full hour. She taught them how to sign hello, thank you, and my name is. The students were engaged, curious, and patient. Some of them fumbled the signs, others practiced until they got it right. At the end of the lesson, a student asked what to do if they forgot how to sign something. Ellie replied, you ask me again, it is okay to ask. That moment, I was told later by Mister Patel, was when something changed in the room. The students stopped seeing Ellie as someone who needed help and started seeing her as someone they could learn from. When I think back on everything that happened, all the meetings and the documentation and the quiet maneuvers it took to get Karen out of that classroom, it would be easy to focus only on the bureaucratic grind of it all. But the truth is that change happened, not because I held a title or filed the right papers, change happened because Ellie refused to stay silent, because she told the truth, because she trusted that someone would listen. I do not believe in happy endings, not in the way people want them to be. What I believe in is accountability, invisibility, in building something better from the ruins of something broken. Karen is gone. Her silence no longer rules that classroom. In her place stands a girl who signs her story with open hands, wide eyes, and the kind of quiet strength that makes people lean in to listen. The news of Karen's departure from West Haven traveled slowly, and then all at once. At first, there was no official announcement, no email from the district, no bulletin in the staff room. It was a clean administrative cut, the kind they craft with neutral phrases and careful omissions. One morning her name was still listed on the staff directory, and by that afternoon it was gone. Her email address stopped working. The door to her classroom was open and empty, the bulletin board stripped, the laminated quote posters taken down. All that remained was a bare desk and the echoes of a voice that would no longer speak there. Some of the teachers whispered about it in hushed tones, others acted like she had never been there to begin with. A few mentioned that they had noticed something had been off for a long time but had never known what to say. Some looked guilty, others looked relieved, most carried on like nothing had changed. But things had changed, Ellie could feel it, so could I. Her new classroom with Mister Patel became more than a safe place, it became a space for transformation. She no longer walked into school bracing herself. She entered each day with questions, with ideas, with a willingness to speak and the confidence that someone would listen. The girl who once flinched when attention turned her way now stood up to present with calm assurance. She signed with clarity, she engaged in discussions, her classmates responded. They had stopped treating her as a mystery, now they treated her as a leader. One afternoon, Mister Patel invited me to attend their end-of-unit presentations. Each student had selected a topic related to identity, and they had spent the past few weeks researching, writing, and preparing visual materials. Ellie chose to present on the history of deaf culture in the United States. She included the establishment of the first schools for the deaf, the development of American sign language, and the long fight for civil rights and language recognition. Her slideshow was clean, simple, and striking. Every slide was paired with signed narration, delivered fluently with her interpreter voicing beside her. When she finished, the room was silent for a moment. Then came the applause, not polite, hesitant, clapping, full applause, the kind that comes from genuine admiration. After the presentation, a boy named Marcus raised his hand and asked her where he could learn more about A S L. Ellie smiled and told him she would bring in a handout the next day. A girl from the front row said she had tried finger spelling her name at home and wanted to check if she had done it right. Ellie nodded and signed it back to her, perfectly. I left the room that day with something new in my chest, not just pride, but a quiet kind of joy, the kind that grows from watching a child reclaim her space in the world. Outside the classroom, change was also taking root. The district formally approved a new initiative to evaluate and revise staff training related to disability awareness and inclusion. It was not a sweeping reform, but it was a start. Teachers would undergo a new onboarding module focused on equity in communication. Schools would be given additional resources for assistive technology and interpreter services. Principals were now required to review I E P implementation logs at regular intervals. It was the kind of work that rarely made headlines, but I knew the impact would be felt in every classroom. I was asked to sit on a committee tasked with shaping the policy language for the initiative. I agreed, on the condition that students would also have a seat at the table, they accepted. Ellie declined to be on the committee herself, but she nominated two classmates she said would represent their grade well. She said she preferred to keep speaking through her work and through the examples she set in the classroom. She had found her lane, and she was moving forward. One afternoon, we received an email from the local community center. They were organizing a panel event for families with children who had disabilities and wanted Ellie to participate. At first, she said no. She had told her story once in front of her peers and that had taken a kind of courage she was not sure she could summon again. But the next day, she changed her mind. She said if even one kid heard her story and felt less alone, it would be worth it. The event was held in the center's small auditorium, folding chairs lined the room, a podium stood on a makeshift stage. The panel featured two parents, a special education teacher, a disability advocate, and Ellie. She sat in the middle, hands in her lap, interpreter by her side. When it was her turn to speak, she did not read from notes, she signed from memory. She talked about being ignored, about being talked over, about having her voice defined by someone else's standards. Then she talked about the day she stood in front of her class and told the truth. She said, they used to see me as a girl who couldn't hear, now they see me as someone with something to say. A woman in the back began to cry, a man beside her nodded slowly. Later, a young boy named Jonah approached Ellie after the panel. He was ten, small for his age, with thick glasses and a speech delay that made him hard to understand. He said he had never talked at school because he was afraid of getting it wrong. He said he liked drawing but never showed anyone his pictures. Ellie knelt beside him and asked if he brought any drawings today. He pulled out a folded piece of paper and handed it to her. It was a picture of a tree. She smiled and signed, thank you. That moment was small, almost invisible to anyone not watching closely, but I saw it, and I knew it mattered. Back at home, Ellie pinned Jonah's drawing beside her own sketch on the bulletin board in her room. She said, I think we are both learning to be loud in our own ways. That night, after she went to bed, I sat in the quiet and thought about how many children had been shaped by silence, not just Ellie, not just Jonah, but all the kids who had been asked to adapt, to minimize, to wait. And I thought about how Karen had been allowed to teach for so long without interruption, how many children like Ellie had walked into her classroom and walked out smaller than they entered. But not anymore. Because now, when people talk about inclusion at West Haven, they do not talk in abstract terms, they talk about Ellie, they talk about her courage. They talk about what it means to listen not just with ears but with intention. And somewhere, in the place where silence used to live, there is now a voice that cannot be ignored. It speaks in signs, in stories, in drawings shared between children who used to be afraid, and it is just getting started. The email arrived on a quiet Thursday afternoon, buried among the usual stack of policy updates, meeting reminders, and budget summaries. I almost missed it, the subject line was plain. Statewide essay contest results. I opened it while sipping coffee, expecting to glance through the winners and then move on, but my eyes froze the moment I saw the name printed under the heading for first place. Ellie. I read it again to be sure, there was no mistake. Ellie had submitted the essay nearly two months earlier, not long after her presentation during Disability Awareness Week. She had worked on it in private, during late afternoons and quiet mornings when the house was still. She had never asked me to read it, never talked about it beyond saying it was just an assignment. I had not pushed, I understood by then that some parts of her healing did not need to pass through me. The contest was statewide, open to middle schoolers from every district. The prompt was simple, what does true strength look like? I sent a message to her school right away. Mister Patel replied first, overjoyed and not at all surprised. He had submitted the essay on Ellie's behalf after she expressed hesitation about drawing attention to herself. He believed it needed to be shared, he had not told her yet. He wanted me to be the one to give her the news. That evening, as we sat on the back porch beneath a pale sky, I told her. At first she did not believe me, she asked to see the email. I handed her my phone. She read it slowly, then lowered the screen and looked up at me, her eyes wide with something I recognized as more than surprise. It was quiet validation, the kind that settles deep and reshapes what you believe about yourself. She signed, they chose mine? I nodded. She signed again, even without knowing it was me. I nodded again and added, especially without knowing. The essay had been judged anonymously, as all entries were, no names, no identifying schools, just words on a page, her words. A week later, we attended the recognition ceremony held at the capital's education building. The room was filled with students, parents, teachers, and district representatives. Ellie stood beside other winners, each holding a small plaque and a copy of their printed essay. She wore a navy blue dress and a pair of silver earrings shaped like tiny stars. Her hair was tied back, her hands resting calmly at her sides. When her name was called, she walked to the front, interpreter trailing beside her. She signed her acceptance with a poise that made the entire room pause. Then she turned to the audience and gave a short speech in A S L, the interpreter voiced her words. She said that strength is not about being loud, it is not about winning or pushing through pain, it is about choosing to keep speaking when others stop listening, it is about finding your own way to be heard. Afterward, a teacher from another district approached her. She said she had never seen a student present themselves with such clarity and grace. She asked Ellie how long she had been using sign language. Ellie told her she had been signing for most of her life, but she had only recently started using it for power instead of survival. Those words stayed with me. When we returned home, Ellie placed the plaque on her desk. She did not mention it again, she did not need to, it was not a trophy to her, it was a signpost. A marker of a journey that had started in humiliation and ended in recognition. The school responded in its own way. They asked Ellie to help design a new student-led inclusion workshop to be piloted the following semester. She agreed, but on one condition. She wanted it to be shaped by students with disabilities, not just those speaking on their behalf. She invited Jonah to be part of the planning group, so did Maya and Marcus. Together they drafted lesson plans, discussion questions, and even role-playing activities to help other students understand how to advocate for themselves and others. It was the kind of work that outlasts a single school year, work that begins small but sends ripples far beyond the walls of one classroom. Ellie had grown taller by then, both in height and in presence. She walked with more ease, she signed with more speed. She had become someone who others looked to, not just because of what had happened to her, but because of what she had done with it. One morning, I found her sitting by the window reading a letter, it was from a former classmate who had moved away the year before. The girl had heard about the essay contest through mutual friends and wanted to thank Ellie for giving her the courage to speak up about her own struggles. She said she had started using accommodations for her reading disability and had stopped pretending she could keep up without them. She said Ellie had made her feel seen. Ellie folded the letter carefully and placed it in a small box with other notes, drawings, and photos she had collected throughout the year. It was her reminder that silence, once broken, could become a chorus. I watched her from the doorway, knowing that this chapter had reached its final page, but the story was far from over. What happened with Karen was no longer the defining part of Ellie's journey. It was the spark, not the fire, the moment of impact, not the shape of the recovery. Karen had lost her position, her influence, and the protection she had long used to shield her behavior. But Ellie had gained something much greater, a sense of herself, a belief in her value, a certainty that her voice, however it was expressed, mattered. As for me, I had learned something too. I had spent years working behind the scenes of a system I thought I understood, but it took watching my daughter suffer under its failures to truly see how much work remained. I no longer saw my role as limited to policy and oversight, I saw it now as a tool, one that could carve space, demand transparency, and lift up the voices that too often went unheard. When people asked me what happened that year, I told them a teacher failed, a system stumbled, and a student stood up. I told them the truth, because the truth is where real change begins. Ellie still walks past her old classroom sometimes, she does not linger, she does not look inside, she keeps moving forward, toward whatever comes next. And with each step, she carries the strength of having spoken when it mattered most, not with volume, but with clarity. Not with anger, but with conviction, not with vengeance, but with vision. Because the girl who was once silenced learned to speak in a language stronger than words. And the world is still learning how to listen.